... which was duly noticed on January tenth, twenty twenty-five through the posting and notification of the press and of course, Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-four. Like to make a, consider a motion to adopt the Board of Education agenda, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second?
Yes.
We'll take a voice, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, eight to zero. Commissioner Hayworth will be here shortly, she's dropping off her son at Craig High School for an event. All right, let's move on to three point one, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Millard?
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jessica Grant, Principal of Harrison Elementary. Dr. Grant has been an educator since two thousand and a member of the Janesville School District since two thousand and two. Ms. Grant started as the Principal of Harrison Elementary in two thousand and ten, and in two thousand and thirteen was awarded Administrator of the Year. Jessica has three master's degree and a doctorate in education. Dr. Grant is licensed by the DPI as a principal, Director of Education, and a superintendent. Jessica, who do you have with you this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner Millard. I am so proud to introduce Zay, one of our fifth graders, and his brother Kai, one of our third graders. They are recent Harrison Hawks, they actually came to Harrison last year, and their previous school's loss is definitely our gain. You are looking at two students who are very hardworking, incredibly kind, and both of them were actually recognized for their awesome character earlier this year as our Harrison Hawk heroes. So I am very proud to have Zay and Kai here tonight to represent Harrison Elementary School and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. I'm sure you don't, you may not have known about this, but January is National Radon Action Month, and the Environmental Protection Agency has designated this to be so. Radon is a naturally occurring, colorless, odorless, radioactive carcinogenic gas that comes from the soil. Radon is the largest source of background radiation, making up thirty-seven percent of Americans' total annual radiation exposure. Radiation, radon exposure is the second leading cause of lung cancer nationwide, causing about twenty-one thousand deaths per year in the U.S. and about five hundred deaths per year in Wisconsin. Radon exposure is the leading cause of lung cancer deaths for non-smokers. The initial evidence for radon causing lung cancer came from studies of thousands of uranium miners carried out over a fifty-year lifespan worldwide, and further evidence has been provided from residential studies. Approximately thirty percent of Wisconsin homeowners have tested their properties for radon. Thirty-one percent of Wisconsin landlords and thirty-five percent of Wisconsin school districts have tested their schools for radon. Of homeowners with elevated radon, about sixty percent did mitigate. In Wisconsin, there are seventeen local health departments that serve as radon information centers for the general public, and test kits are made available at reduced rates. Results from test kits are used to populate an online interactive map that illustrates radon risk potential in the state, and that is located at www.dhs.wisconsin.gov. And fortunately, elevated indoor radon levels can be prevented or mitigated with a variety of strategies. Of course, most importantly, construction techniques can be implemented when the building is constructed. That will mitigate radon levels, and the cost to the builder of including radon-resistant features in a new home during the construction is typically less than the cost to mitigate the home after construction. So we encourage everyone to get their homes tested for radon and mitigate any high levels. Thank you.
Susan?
Thanks, Susan. I'd like to chime in a little bit on radon. Actually, I recently in October, I installed a radon mitigation system. And the reason why I did is I tested, and I tested, and I continue to test. So really, when it comes down to the, the key number is four parts per million. And when I tested twenty years ago, I was hitting at about one and a half. When I tested in September, I was at four point two. So it can change over time. And as I looked at it in more detail, one of the incidents that they don't have the scientific data to support it, but it appears like our nice form-rich soils, particularly in southern Wisconsin, seems to produce a higher level of radon over time. So just even if you've tested in the past, I would encourage you to test again. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
I gotta add one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Rock County is one of the elevated areas for radon potential and occurring as such. I know, I just installed two detectors in ours, one in the basement and one on the first floor. Not necessary to do more than one, but I just feel more comfortable, like Greg, you're seeing elevated levels today and whatever the reason they're working on. So Rock County is more elevated than many other areas in the country.
All right, moving on. Get to recognize some wonderful students from Craig and Parker, our ACT scholars. I'm assuming that's why all the parents, grandparents, and family are here?
Good evening, Commissioners. Dr. B and I are very pleased...
Thanks, everybody, for showing.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations to your students.
I did not get a thirty-six.
Yeah, I did not get a thirty-six.
Thirty-two?
No.
Okay, let's move on to student presenters. From Parker High School, Kira Sailing.
Hello. Happy New Year, everyone. Once again, my name is Kira Sailing, and I will be representing Parker High School tonight. Students will begin choosing classes for the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six school year. This week, we have an extended advisory, and students will watch a video about class options and fill out their subject selection sheets. Counselors will be in English classes after the new semester begins. Counselors have visited middle schools to help future freshmen choose their courses for the next year. Parker is excited to welcome the class of two thousand twenty-nine this fall. Parker DECA competed in the District DECA competition on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Parker DECA has sixty-five students competing at the comp, at the conference in different areas of business and marketing. With thirty-three students being award winners, over seven hundred students and one hundred and seventy local business professionals from southern Wisconsin attended the District's, District DECA competition. The State DECA Conference will be held February twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. DECA's industry-validated competitive events are aligned with the national curriculum standards in the career clusters of marketing, business management, and administration, finance, and hospitality, and tourism. This is my last year competing at the district level, and I am so thankful for the experience, the experiences that I have gained over the past three years. With the semester ending next week, students will be taking final exams on Wednesday and Thursday. Students and teachers have been working hard to get all of the assignments and projects done before exams. For Parker as a whole, we take studying for final exams very seriously and aim to do our best. At the same time, students have started to choose their classes for the two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six school year, like previously mentioned. Two members of the Parker debate team have qualified for state. Sorch Morris and Amaya Henderson will represent Parker this coming weekend at the Wisconsin State Debate Tournament in West Bend. We at Parker are very excited about this and wish Sorch and Amaya lots of luck at state. In robotics news, Sean Sullivan, President of Automation Systems of America, and Morse Electrical from Beloit purchased seven thousand and one hundred dollars in robotics parts for the, for this year's first robotics competition. In just over one week, the team began building a drivetrain along with having completed a design plan for this year's build. The team has raised a level of interest and participation in our club and gained new members, which has significantly improved our organization and productivity. The group is excited for the rest of this season and is, and the up-and-coming competitors to represent the Rock County area. Parker Athletics is in full swing this winter, and we are excited to share some highlights and the opportunities ahead as we continue to build the program that reflects the values of our school community. Recently, we have had several signing days for some of our female student athletes who have made commitment to compete at the next level. Kennedy Prime is going to Minnesota State and committed in softball. Mia Losi attending Clark University and is committed for both volleyball and bowling. Lauren Radisky, Judson University, for volleyball. And this Friday, Shaylan Shu will be signing at UW Whitewater to compete in track and field. Some recent community engagement activities have included the two thousand twenty-four SDJ Bags of Hope event in December involved several student athletes volunteering their time to pack groceries. This event has gave our student athletes an opportunity to become active leaders in our community, and we always have a great time with our friends, family, and community. In collaboration with the Janesville Education Foundation, Parker DECA and the Parker Girls' Basketball has raised nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is going to the J E F grant in memory of Sam Loizzo. We are looking forward to a busy month ahead, which includes many home athletic events, where we are hosting numerous up-and-coming special events such as Girls' Basketball Halftime Shootouts, which is sponsored by Parker DECA and Ellis Orthodontists, Girls' Basketball Franklin Middle School Band Night, Girls' and Boys' Basketball St. Williams Basketball Youth Nights, Boys' and Girls' Basketball JBA Youth Basketball Nights, Girls' Basketball and Wrestling Teacher Appreciation Nights, Boys' Basketball and Boys' Hockey, the Parker National Honors Society is hosting cancer awareness events in conjunction with our up-and-coming blood drive, and Girls' Basketball Edison Middle, Middle School Band Night. We are also looking forward to the many youth opportunities that Parker is offering in the next couple of months to get elementary and middle school students engaged in athletics at a young age, including Westside Winter Wednesdays Open Shoot, Future Viking Baseball Winter Workouts, Future Viking Gymnastics Skills Sessions, Westside Winter Running Club, Parker Youth Cheer Camp, and Parker Youth Gymnastics Camp. Lastly, we want to remind our community that the Parker Athletic Booster Club is hosting our eighth annual trivia night fundraiser. This will take place February fifteenth at the Elks Club in Janesville. If you are looking for a fun day out with friends and family, visit Parker's website for more information on this year's event. On behalf of Parker Athletics, we want to thank you for our continued support and for recognizing the impact of sports, that sports has on our students' growth, both on and off the site of competition. Together, we are building a program that instills lifelong values and pride in our school community. Students in novel studies read the book, The Assignment, by Lisa Weimer, and had the opportunity to meet the book's author via Zoom. Ms. Weimer, an award-winning writer in education in Milwaukee, graciously answered students' questions, discussing the book's big ideas and shared insights about their journey to become an author, as well as her approach to researching and writing this novel. This opportunity was made possible with the generous support of the Nathan and Esther Pell's Holocaust Education and Resource Center located in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The Chinese club is planning a Lunar, a Lunar New Year celebration on January thirty-first in the West Commons from six to eight p.m. There will be student performances, food, activities, and fundraisers. Students from Edison, Franklin, and Marshall will be also performing. The board is invited to attend. Parker National Honors Society is hosting a cancer awareness week from January, or February third to the eighth. Lots of information and fundraising is going on. On Monday, we were, we will wear pink for breast cancer awareness, Tuesday, yellow and gold for child cancer awareness. In addition, anyone who comes to the boys' basketball game and brings stuffed animals to donate will get in for free. Stuffed animals and money will be, and money from the miracle minute will be donated to the Isaac Strong Foundation, plus Parker Band will be there. On Wednesday, we will wear purple for awareness of all cancers, and it will be Paint Parker Purple Day, where students will dance to music and create a fun video. Thursday, we will wear orange for leukemia awareness. Friday, we're red for blood cancer awareness. NHS will host a blood drive from eight-thirty to two forty-five. Saturday, come to the boys' hockey games, Janesville versus Beloit, Parker Band will be there. Fundraisers and games going on throughout the game, chuck-a-puck, raffle baskets, and a miracle minute. All money raised will be donated to the Rock County Cancer Coalition. And finally, I would like to personally invite you to attend Parker's Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration this Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at either nine oh four a.m. or nine forty-one a.m. in Parker's Lodge Auditorium. This celebration completely, is completely student-led and will include inspirational speeches and moving musical numbers. The theme is on, the theme is on a mission to protect the dream. Dr. King expressed optimism about the future despite the challenges of the present, signifying his unwavering belief in the possibility of achieving racial equality in America. To quote Dr. King, "I say to you today, my friends, that even though we face difficulties today and tomorrow, I still have a dream." And finally, Parker Arts Academy and Parker High School Choir will be taking students to the Overture Center to see the National Broadway Tour musical performance of Shucked, the musical. Later in the month, we will be hosting the Luther College Nordic Choir for choir, for choir exchange on Tuesday, February fourth. Parker Arts Academy is having great rehearsals for the musical Hello, Dolly, which will be performing in Parker High School on February fourteenth through the sixteenth and the twenty-first through the twenty-third. We are thrilled to announce that Ryan Hahn, a senior at Parker, has earned a perfect score on the Microsoft Word certification test in his computer applications class. Ryan has a top score in the state of Wisconsin, and as a result of this impressive accomplishment, Ryan has qualified to compete in Microsoft Office National Competition in Dallas, Texas this June. Thank you for listening, and have a good night.
And from Craig High School, Presley Morgan.
Okay, good evening. I'm also going to start off with our DECA. So this year, we had thirty-five first-time competitors, which out of the fifty-six of us, took up most of us. Seven placed in the top three overall, which gave us an automatic bid to state. I was included in that seven. Eighteen earned a combined of thirty-two medals, and because of our volunteering work of trick-or-cane coloring pages and et cetera, we will be taking at least ten competitors and most likely more. FPLA District is on February first, so students are currently taking practice tests, creating presentations, writing essays in preparation for that. I've just finished the Sam Loizzo shirts, and they were sent out to everyone, so make sure to purchase them, whether you want green for Parker or blue for Craig. Make sure to support. We have officially organized our dance, which is a neon theme after the football game, in which we're going to have best seed in the house and miracle minute. Including in miracle minute, we're going to have QR codes, so we can do online payment as well. Our first semester is coming into an end, so classes are preparing for finals, and students are adjusting to the final schedule and learning skills that will help them in the future with final exams if they're excelling to college. We're currently updating Craig's athletic page, so all of the club presidents, vice presidents, or members are giving descriptions and sending fun pictures, so people can look at our website and decide what clubs they want to join within the next year. Speaking of pictures, our senior superlative pictures were just taken, and the yearbooks have officially gone on sale. The National Honors Society is having a supply drive for the Boys' and Girls' Club later this month, and our Spanish National Honors Society is getting closer to a thousand dollars raised for scholarships within the club. We just had our preview night, first show choir, which included four Atkinson middle schoolers, both a combined of Edison and Marshall, and then Milton High School performing at Craig. The jazz band had performed at J-Pac this last weekend, and the orchestra did an annual festival food playing for Christmas time. Tying into sports, we had our Craig Invite, and Craig placed second at that for gymnastics. They just had a kids' clinic for Palms before Christmas break. There's a basketball game tonight with the JV Palms competing, and they're currently three-for-three. Both girls' and boys' basketballs are having a great successful season. For wrestling, we have two ranked members in state, and they're currently six-in-one. We had our MLK Assembly today to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr., and it was a grand success. There was singing, speeches, the steppers, performances, and more. And we had a student say that she was really proud that she could connect something to the whole school. So she was glad that it was presented to everyone. And as a final announcement, our musical has just been announced as Anything Goes, so that it will be coming this spring. Thank you all for listening.
Moving on, I have no request to comment to the board, so we'll move on to four point one, Consider Approval the Consent Agenda. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Herter?
Herter?
Mm-hmm. Do we want electrical, electrical, digitally vote, or we want a voice?
I'll turn that on, Amaya.
Okay. We'll, we'll voice, voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. Let's move on to five point one.
Want to provide an opportunity to give the board an update on our next steps for our referendum. We have one hundred and fifty-one point nine million dollars worth of work in front of us. Our Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee heard today a little bit of information about how we might go about financing that, and that will be coming to the board. But we have some experts here, EUA and JP Cullen, and they will be kind of walking the board through the process of doing the work at our facility. So I'll introduce our folks, and then they can answer questions that you might have. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you all again. I know it's been a few weeks since we've been here. I'm Torrey Schultz, I'm with Upstate U, and I'm joined by Mike Johnson with JP Cullen.
I was just wondering, should I come up here? Come on up. Side by side, I mean.
Two's company, three's a crowd, right? And as Superintendent Holsman said, we're here to give you an update on where we're at with the overall referendum process. First off, congratulations. I know it was a long process to get through, and you know, certainly it was, I think, going to be worth it in the end here, but tonight, we're going to talk about how we're moving through the next several years' worth of work, both from a design and engineering standpoint, which is, you know, where I come in. On the other side of the table, you know, Mike and his team from a construction standpoint obviously have a heavy lift on, on their side as well. So I'm going to walk you through kind of a high-level summary of where we're at tonight. So, Mike, you want to jump into the next slide here?
Are we running the slides too?
I think so.
Okay. All right. So ultimately here, we'll get to the phasing and the sequencing, but as always, we have to educate a little bit on the background and how and why we got to that point. So we've had a core team grouped together, which is constructor, architect, and then some district representatives as well. And we've had a few meetings. I worked through kind of the initial... I worked through kind of the initial pass of a timeline, Tori and I did. We came up with what we thought was a fantastic plan, where we considered things from the architectural and the construction team. We looked at things like schools with similar floor plans, and should we pair them together? Looked at schools regionally. We made considerations for things like Franklin and Edison, where we already have work underway. The background drawings are already built, so we could like execute and start producing construction drawings in the design phase faster versus schools like this building, where we don't really have the floor plans, or we haven't done a lot of work in here. So we made considerations for design timelines, constructability timelines, but then also like build-ability considerations. We brought that plan to the core team, and were immediately challenged with, well, that looks great, but what about this? And did you consider the geography? And in our assessment phases, we determined that Wilson and Roosevelt and the other four schools that are Washington and Adams, there we go, those four schools, right, have the biggest need, yet in our plan, we put them last, right? So we were challenged, like, what, how's the community going to receive that? How is our faculty and staff going to receive that, that these facilities that need the most need are put at the end of the chain? So we went back to the drawing board, and the solution that we're going to be presenting today is a solution or a combination of our thoughts as designers and builders, but also the probably most important part is the district's feedback representing not only the faculty and the administration, but also the taxpayers, the students, the families, right? So it's a really good back-and-forth meeting that we think got us to the right solution. So before, again, we get into that, and then Tori's going to talk a little bit about the design process.
Yep. So kind of a primer on the architectural process. There's, there's three major stages of the design process that our team is going to be going through. Actually, we've already started shortly after the referendum passed, actually. And what that does is it builds on information. So as we start at the very beginning, the process in the green column there, you know, that's where we're gathering a lot of the information about the actual buildings and about the requirements of those buildings. And then as we move through, you know, meetings with teachers and staff, district leadership, you know, we add layers of information to that. And so finally, when we get to that center column, where we have the red column there, we're ready to issue those drawings for construction. And then we hand those over to Mike, and he takes them from there and executes the construction. And hopefully, at the end of the day, we have a big ribbon cutting and everybody's happy with the work. But just know that through the process, it's an iterative process, it's an additive process, so we'll work to refine drawings, we'll work to refine the, the, the actual scope of work, and then add on to that as we need to, to create the final set of documents. So it's not, you know, right out of the gate, you know, done, you know, we have to work through it. It's a dialogue, the district with the contractor, to make it all come together.
And this is a, this is like an industry standard process. You, in past meetings or even future meetings, you may hear us referring to S D., D D., C D. phases. Those are those headings at the top of those columns. Schematic Design, Design Development, Construction Documents. It's an industry standard process that, right, as a designer and a builder team, we go through this with districts all across the state. So we're not, it's not a groundbreaking process or anything that we're, that we're introducing to Janesville School District. We're very comfortable, and we do, like, this is our bread and butter of how we service the customers. So it's just a process to get through, right? We have nineteen facilities in Janesville School District, and you'll see on the next slide here why we're talking about phases within the phase.
Right. So, you know, to Mike's point, you know, we have to figure out a strategy on how to work through nineteen buildings' worth of, of construction, of design and construction. And so what we've come up with is a, is a three-step, three-phase process. And so for this, this calendar year, two thousand twenty-five, we are working on the first six buildings' worth of work and getting that all documented. We go into buildings, we measure them up, we photograph them extensively. Our engineers crawl through all the dark, you know, closed spaces to really understand what we're dealing with. So that process takes time, and we want to make sure that we give ourselves, you know, a sufficient amount of time to work through all six buildings. And so at the end of the year, once that process is complete, we'll hand those documents over to Mike and his team, and then, starting January of twenty-six, they'll go into their phase of the project, where they're bidding out all of the work and then executing those construction contracts and building that out, you know, for the next twelve to fifteen months roughly. So that will extend from, from January of twenty-six through summer of twenty-seven. So while Mike is doing that for the first phase, our team resets, and we tackle the next batch of buildings. And so it's, it's kind of a step process, right? You know, design and then build, and then while they're building, we're designing the next group, and then so on and so forth. So what that does is allows us to, to segment our efforts. It helps keep us focused. It helps, you know, minimize the burden on the district, because it's certainly going to be a big lift for the district to participate in all these conversations and be part of this process. So we want to make sure that we're not overwhelming any one part of the, the team here, and we think that this is the best way forward with the work here.
Sorry, I forgot we're driving that too.
So this slide here represents the, the work that we have identified and how we've broken that up. So right off the bat, we do have some work that's underway right now in, in terms of design. That will start taking place this summer, and that largely has to do with security work at the two high schools, as well as some roofing work at a handful of the other facilities that really needed some emergency roof repairs. From there, Bid Package One that you see in the, in the second to the left column, those are the first six projects that we're taking on right now. So those are the team, those are the buildings that our team right now is actively documenting the work. So we're drawing, we're, we're engineering, we're having the meetings with staff to make sure that those buildings are done at the end of the year, and we can hand that off to Mike. From there, we move into Bid Package Two and start that documentation process next, next year, and then Bid Package Three the year after that. And so this represents, as Mike said earlier, this represents the, the feedback that we got from the district in terms of how do we package this work up together? And, you know, you'll see it's a variety of schools. You know, we've got a couple of high schools, we've got some elementary schools, we've got the district office. It's about, it's a matter of making sure the scope is right, that the dollar value is relatively balanced from phase one to phase two to phase three, so we're not overloading the, the system unnecessarily. So there's a lot that went into the, the packages of work. I think we're in a pretty good shape to, to move forward on it.
It's not really represented on here from a financial standpoint, but if, for people that are thinking down that pathway, the hundred and fifty million roughly, right, is a, for Bid Package One, Two, and Three, is if we tried to balance it a little bit financially to, it's roughly fifty million dollars, right, per, right, from a financial spending aspect. That's, that was part of the reasoning for the distribution of the schools as well. That, that weighed into it. Right, dollars relate to the volume of work, and we have to also balance the workload that our contractors can perform against other projects that are going to be out in the industry. I think Dan has some really great statistics on how many referendums passed across the state, which means, right, contractors are going to be busy in the summer, so that, again, another piece of the pie that was evaluated in the, the timeline analysis. Somebody did, or maybe I hit it twice. So this really hard-to-read Gantt chart is a small portion of Cullen's and my, in my effort on a Gantt chart schedule. So the next slide is going to zoom in on some more specific details. Please do not pencil these dates into your day planner for the district reps, okay? I would say on the grand scheme of order magnitude, right, we are plus or minus weeks, but the, the intent of this slide is, we've, Tori and I have been part of the team here through secure pathways, through S R., right? We've been involved with the district most relevantly in the last, like, four years.
Four or five years, yeah.
A lot, a common theme feedback that we've received, that we are proactively making steps to improve upon our district engagement at the principal level and, and like in, in school faculty level. So some of the items which may be a little more legible on this slide are kind of those burgundy or district maroon. I don't know what the right color is, but it's intentional that, like, district review thirty percent. And what that means is, when we talked about earlier the schematic design and design development phases of the pre-construction process, when we get completed with design development drawings, right, we would expect to have a core team meeting that invites principals to talk about floor plans and a, and a plan of attack within their facility, and have more engagement and feedback on, can we, can we get this whole wing or not? Can we incorporate, I don't know, when are finals, when are spring break, when are teacher conferences, right, to leverage the non-school days into our schedules where they, where they can? And also just to set realistic expectations on the district facility side of, right, where there's, there's going to be hammering and pounding happening during the school year, right? So we want to set that table earlier, set the expectation so that whatever reactions or responses are needed within that facility can, right, we can make those efforts and plan ahead for. So that's, right, again, not specifically committing to memory, but we are trying to represent more district engagement and meetings and, and show those. And also, we would share these, you know, through the core team, and they will be delegated accordingly, as, you know, we have the respective schools in where Dan and, and the core team can share those with the principals, or we also have special engagement in the special ed. department and security department as well. So there may be locally within each school, or maybe it's a district representative, I guess we have really in this case, representing safety and special ed. So we would engage those individuals as well. So this, these two slides are just a snippet of the, the phase, what we're calling the Phase One Group One Schools. So as we have meetings and improve and hone in this process, it's going to be a copy, paste, and adjust per school. So it'll be a, a really long and detailed Gantt chart or construction schedule that we have, and then we also incorporate this. When we get to that path, or that process of construction bidding, we'll have this level of detail. The benefit that it has for us on the builder's side is, when we start to develop those school-specific plans of, we're going to, you know, if we have work in Zone A and then work in Zone B, we can build that into our subcontractors so that they can, right, if I've talked in the past about the more detail we can provide, the more accurate our bidding is, the less contingency, the less waste in our bidding, right? So we want to drill down, we're talking the end of two thousand twenty-six to prepare for bidding, but it's a process to get into more detail, the more that we can, the better and more competitive bid prices will result from our subcontractors.
And I think, you know, just to kind of build on and close out, you know, the, the conversation about scheduling, I think it, you know, this certainly just reinforces the amount of effort and detail it takes to, to go through this process, to make sure that things run as smooth as they possibly can, and try to anticipate as many of the challenges and, and head those off when and where we can. So, you know, Mike's success in construction, you know, a year and a half from now starts now, right? And it's evident by the, the schedule that he's already working on building out. I think last, last but not least, just wanted to kind of touch on, on how, how we as the designer and contractor are working with the, the district itself to get a, a flow of information, you know, you know, whether it's, it's feedback that we need to move forward with, or it's information that, that the core team needs to, you know, share with the board and with the community. This, this slide here tries to articulate that a little bit. So as Mike mentioned, we, we do have a core team, which is a, a group of architects, contractors, district representatives, that are the core nucleus of this project and will be for the entire duration, whether that's finance, facilities, you know, district leadership from an educator or special education level or security. Those folks are part of this core team. They provide us the feedback that we need to make the decisions for the documents. Those folks will then engage with, with their constituents, so, you know, whether it's Chris or Allison, you know, working with principals and, and school, school folks, they'll bring that information forward and share that with us. We'll incorporate that same thing on the security side, same thing on the specialized side. So all of that information flows in, and then we can flow that information up to Superintendent Holsman or others at, you know, within the E S C. and, and get that to both the board and, and the community at large. So that's really how we, we engage with the district as a whole, whether it's at the school level or at the district leadership level. So any questions that we can answer on, in any of us? Yes?
Just a few things. One, I appreciate the, I, I always call it the devil is in the details, so I'm very cognizant that even this presentation was a lot of work to put together, and I appreciate all the planning that has been put forth, because when you're tackling even just, I mean, you, this is a long-term agenda, and so I just appreciate that. Second of all, I appreciate that in your construction and architect world, you define D D., C D., because even, I have a little bit of construction background, like, little. People even that are listening to this, you know, presentation online, you know, for you to go to that level of detail to say that, you know, S D. stands for schematic design, and, and what all that means. I appreciate that background knowledge. And, and third, I'm getting old because it just went by me. I'll think of it later, but just thank you for the, for the in-depth, oh, that was it. I appreciate, because we've talked at as, as a board level, just involving more staff and principals, so I appreciate it, because I, I view it as like you're going into their house. And so to have those conversations ahead of time and setting that table, like you said, to have those conversations with the principals and what does their schedule look like, especially when you're dealing with a variety of different student populations, like a hammer, hammer against a wall might disrupt a classroom or a specialized classroom or students. So I really appreciate the care and the sensitivity that you're putting into having those conversations ahead of time with those building principals and the staff. So that, I just wanted to say thank you for that ahead of time.
True.
I'm involved in a different project in the community, and I hear schematic design and D D. and C D. and I can't tell you, like, I'm going to take a picture of this, because I feel like it's really going to help me in other aspects of my life, so thank you very much. Like Commissioner Herter said, this is great. You know, we've, you know, people ask questions, well, what's the scope? We really see this, and we can communicate effectively out when we're asked, when my mom might ask me questions about, well, what's going on, or what's the plan with the construction and the different things? This is, this is so great. Thank you. It's nice to know that the same team that we've been working with, we're continuing with, because I think that there's great relationships that have been built, and again, with what you've communicated with, with, with what Lisa was saying, you know, July, there might not be a whole lot of staff at Craig High School in July or any other school, and so having those conversations and being in touch with one another, I think is going to help everyone have a more successful endpoint. So thanks and good luck. We appreciate your work here.
Appreciate the, the kind words.
Two things. On the communication plan, when it says the board updates are monthly, is that going to F B G.? Is it coming like in a memo just to the board, just like, so we're updated on progress?
Good question. I don't know if we've fully identified that flow yet, or, or the, the manner in which that update will be made, and we'll certainly work on that with our core team group.
Okay. And then, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, I know Craig waited for doors forever. I don't know, Allison's not here anymore, but are you anticipating any, like, are there supply chain material issues that you were running into right now that, maybe I know we aren't even doing any of this for a year, but here?
Right, the crystal ball, right? Caveat. It, we are way better than the, right, post-COVID reaction where we had.
No material.
Yeah, yeah, no material. I would say, right now, right, caveat today, right, things are trending back closer to normal, to where we can make reasonable plans and assumptions. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Two comments for the board, just to consider. One is that in order for us to complete this project, we're going to have to do some work while school is present. All this work can't be done between. All this work can't be done between June and September. So that's one. Two is, it also does provide us with some opportunity to potentially make some calendar changes in the future, because the DPI will now give us waivers to either start earlier so that we can maybe make some changes to give a longer period of time for the work to be done in the summer. So for example, maybe we start earlier one year so we can end earlier, so there's a longer period of time of which the summer happens. So again, we're a few calendars out before that happens, but that's another, I think, a positive from our perspective, and we'll work with the group on that avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, five point two, presentation, consider approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development assumptions.
Commissioner Donald Halsin, you're ready to go, aren't you? Okay, so we'll go through this relatively quickly. You have a memo, you have a slide deck, which captures essentially the memo at a very high level. Keep in mind, the budget assumptions provide us with some general parameters, they're not necessarily locking us in, but we have to have some general parameters as we move forward in our budget development. So Finance Buildings and Grounds heard me say this almost ad nauseam, because I had, I think, six or so presentations, different segmented out. So we obviously have four priorities, and really, as we continue to work in terms of does the budget match up with our priorities, the student excellence, staff excellence, operational excellence, and our community partnerships. Again, referencing the memo, we can look at essentially per people aid remaining at seven hundred and forty-two dollars, that's most likely not changing, right? We'll assume essentially a status quo in terms of our FTE or our membership, which drives our revenue limit authority. And we can assume essentially, because it's in state statute, for at least another four hundred and ninety-eight years, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per member in terms of a revenue limit increase. Most likely, the ceiling, the little revenue limit ceiling, which I'd say is the floor, is going to maintain at eleven thousand, and our categorical aid will essentially remain at about thirty percent. That is some certain, right? So depending upon expenditures within special aid across the state, depends upon how quickly that defined value is consumed. So what I included in the memo, right, we have a really good peer network in terms of what are some of my peers considering in terms of their assumptions, right? And everything is pretty much status quo. Now, as the governor reveals his budget in February, there's been lots of discussion preceding that, there'll be lots of discussion at joint finance in terms of will specialized reimbursement increase? Certainly, I would say boards, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, right, WASBO, WASDA, all the different associations are certainly going to advocate for an increase in special ed reimbursement. They're going to also advocate for an increase potentially in the little revenue limit floor ceiling, as well as an increase in per membership. We don't know. There's lots of budgetary decisions that need to be made prior to the budget potentially being signed in July, right? So staffing with Mr. Garner and Superintendent Holtzman, reveal staffing, right? We're assuming, when we just developed the budget, we're assuming, which is why we're assuming essentially a status quo. We spent a little bit of time, I believe, in December, talking about some of the budget items at Finance Buildings and Grounds, and really taking a look at what impact, let's say, would an increase in special ed reimbursement be, right? But it's just really, I don't want to say guesswork, it's just a projection, we won't know. So we're being very conservative, and I would say my peers throughout the state are also being very conservative. When we look to the expense side, right, essentially, the CPI U base wage is projected to be three percent. Keep in mind, three percent, and then there's typically net, which is less than the three, right? So we get into kind of the language, are you budgeting three? We're essentially budgeting, when we get to the last page or thereabouts the last page, right, our net is about a two-point-five percent. But that's a three percent CPI base wage. Health insurance at twelve-point-five, conservative, right? I know PPC received an update, like, we don't quite know yet, it's just kind of part of the game, so to speak, that every district encounters this time of the year, what are our projections? We know our MLR, medical loss ratio, right, is higher, right? It's kind of a high level, certainly not below a hundred, right? It's certainly north of that. So twelve-point-five percent, you know, is probably fairly conservative as well. Dental insurance about five, think of our dental spend is about ten percent of our health spend, four percent increase in student transportation, that's a contractual arrangement, as well as a four percent increase in utility cost. Right, so a little bit hard to see perhaps on the screen, but included in your packet is really taking a look at all those values, plugging them in at this point in time, revenues minus expenses, are we balanced? Are we surplus? Or are we a negative, right? And currently, as we roll things up, right, for this particular slide, keep in mind, we're negative nine thirty-two, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand. I asked this question that you're about to see last month in December, right? So I would probably ask maybe for committee members to refrain, if there is a particular individual, I hope maybe right off the bat will have an answer to this question, right, is what action did the board take in twenty-three, twenty-four to ease the projected deficit?
If you can.
Yes, is the answer to that, right? So you may recall, we had a surplus in cash, right? The board made the decision based upon administrative recommendation to pay off its WRS debt. That was just shy of five million. Once we do that, right, what that does, because that debt is within the district's revenue limit authority, is it frees up cash to be allocated towards Fund Ten general operating rather than Fund Thirty-Eight debt payments. Right, so having a forecast model, using that forecast model, we could see, right, the benefit of that move that the board elected to undertake. So when we look at that minus nine thirty-two, add in about another nine ninety, you had a very mild surplus at this point in time. So you're not starting necessarily from a negative nine thirty-two, we're almost starting balanced, but we're only starting balanced because of the action that the board undertook. There's the answer. Defeats Fund Thirty-Eight debt, nine ninety, thereabouts. So that's a high-level budget overview. I know there's a pending workshop on January twenty-eighth, I was almost going to say June twenty-eighth, but that would be a little too late. So I'm certainly here to entertain any questions. Again, the board taking action on this just really kind of solidifies the broader assumptions that we're using to develop the budget.
We wouldn't have made that action had you not had the foresight to go to that type of modeling for the district, as well as presenting it to us and showing us how wise of a decision that would make. So just thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm fortunate to work with a great team, good administrative team to help support that. Thank you.
Anticipated membership, ninety-nine seventeen. Weren't we in the ninety-three, ninety-four hundreds? So that'd be good if that's right, but I feel like our, because that's Third Friday count, right?
I just signed something that was like nine-three.
Right. So how was that?
Right, so keep in mind, there's always a difference between the enrollment count and the membership count. So our membership count is approximately ninety-one hundred, enrollment could certainly be higher, right? And this is because we're adding in as well as subtracting our open enrollment in and out. Also, when you take a look at membership versus enrollment, keep in mind, four Kers are a one enrollment with a point-six membership, so they're not a full one full-time equivalent.
I'm just surprised membership is so high. I'm glad, but I don't understand how. One more time, so four K is point-six membership, but one enrollment.
Correct.
That should bring membership down.
Correct.
Okay, so if we've got, if Third Friday count is ninety-three hundred, or would you say ninety-one hundred?
Well, no, it was ninety-three something.
Okay, so Third Friday.
Because you have your other elements of open enrollment, who are also point-six as well as one-point-oh's, right? So membership is only those students who reside in the school district, whether they attend, and they attend our schools. Right, so we have, let's say, I think we looked at some of the numbers at Finance Buildings and Grounds today. We have three hundred students who come in from Milton, right? Off the top of my head, we have two hundred and fifty students who leave to go to Milton, right? So we don't count, we count the three hundred from an enrollment standpoint, but we net out, and we're really two fifty in terms of membership.
Dan, could I summarize? I see where we're coming from, but I believe the numbers was six hundred open enrollment out, give or take. And so we count open enrollment out, and then open enrollment in, we get reimbursed, if that makes sense. So if you live in a school district of Janesville and choose to go somewhere else, we count you. Then, when you go to another district, then the state reimburses that district in June. So we're, so we don't count the, I don't know, I don't remember what that number was, we're plus, minus twenty-four, or something like that, I think we had in Buildings and Grounds, something like that. So let's say it's six hundred and twenty-five out and six hundred in. We don't count the ins in this number, we count the outs. So it it just is a little bit different. Plus, summer school falls into that number, so there's a summer school, is that correct? There's a summer school number, which is around the hundred on an annual basis. So I use a term loosely, this is not butts and seats.
That makes more sense then.
Correct. Right, because enrollment does not drive the district's revenue limit authority, only membership drives the district's revenue limit authority. Membership in our case is always less than enrollment. Because to Mark's point, Commissioner, Superintendent Holtzman's point, congratulations on your promotion. Now I lost my train of thought, sorry.
Anyone else?
Like Dan said, we have a workshop coming up at the end of the month. I already sent some questions in ahead of time, that deep dive into the budget itself, like into the fund level, you know, athletic budgets, Jeep budgets, what, everything you, anything you want to know, we can have a discussion about that on the twenty-eighth. So I please encourage you to think about that and get some questions in ahead of time, if you can.
Could we possibly see a compilation of some of the questions that have already been submitted with that? Sometimes that helps me.
Spur ideas, the wheels turning?
Yeah, because I may not know what to ask till I see some smart person and what their questions were. I don't know.
We can do that.
Okay.
Please.
Are we, are we doing a deep dive into the funds? Each one of the funds in this workshop?
I.
I'm asking for a reason.
I, 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 I'm providing information that is requested.
I only ask because one of the most beneficial things I received early on in my board service was the budget per fund, but then a brief description about what what each fund was. You know, what's Fund Ten, what's Fund Thirty-Eight?
Certainly.
That was very helpful. So I don't know if that question has been asked, but it might be helpful for you, Susan, because it was very beneficial for me. Oh, you never, oh, yeah. You added, yes. So if you could provide, I know you have it somewhere, because I have it in a long eight-and-a-half or eleven by seventeen piece of paper somewhere.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Did we say that we were going to talk about health insurance too at that time? And can I get a feel for where we're going in that way? Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, so I guess when I was talking to the superintendent, this was, I guess, something in particular interest to me at this time. Particularly, I asked, what's going on with the athletic budget? You know, because I have my own motivation to ask that question because of, you know, is there any money in the budget for outdoor facilities? That kind of stuff. I wanted, I wanted to see the athletic budget more deep dive. I asked about the international program, how's that going? What are our projections for that? I had a couple other questions. I was curious about how many administrative positions do we have? You know, I said coaches, I didn't mean athletic coaches when I.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I wanted to clear, I didn't mean football coaches, I meant like we have academic coaches. What other administrative positions do we have that we have on board? So I personally wanted to be able to ask some of these questions myself. Another question I asked, in light of our hundred and fifty million dollar capital maintenance referendum, so how does that impact our annual capital maintenance budget? And how does that, how does that fit? Because if some of that one-fifty can take care of some of that, do we have some money for outdoor athletic facilities? To be honest with you, and completely transparent. So I'm wondering how that fits in to the budget. And it is getting deeper into the budget, but every once in a while, I don't think we've had this kind of discussion in a few years, and it may be good just to to hear some of that. So we got that coming up. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Dan. We need a motion to support or approve budget assumptions. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? That passes unanimously? Thank you. Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee meeting.
Well, hello, everybody. We recently had, last week, had our January PPC meeting, and we had some wonderful topics on our agenda. First, we talked about, had a nice overview of the Strategic Plan Advisory Team. It was an introduction. Now, I want to point out, this is something that the committee talked about as well, PPC committee, is that this was not connected to the Strategic Planning Committee that met last year, that had community members and board members and staff, totally separate. So not related. This is a new team, which is an advisory team, but looking at some strategic areas. It launched earlier this fall in our district with a group of, made up of administrators, coordinators, academic learning coaches, directors, with a goal to evaluate our stakeholder feedback, collaborate to develop potential solutions, and direct system-level decision-making. The goal of this team is to do a deep dive on some of the challenges we are facing as a district, brainstorm, prioritize ideas, look for new solutions with our budget in mind, and create action steps or next steps for our district. The team was split into two groups to look at a couple of focus questions that they were directed at to. They came up with a long list of potential solutions that will be evaluated for a possible timeline of action to see, you know, what makes sense for our district. The feedback received from this new advisory team was very favorable, and we received a nice selection of those comments, just so we could get that feedback as well. There are plans to continue work with these two groups, and PPC looks forward to hearing some more updates about that Strategic Plan Advisory Team and, you know, some of the action steps that are proposed for our district. I forgot to mention that, of course, our meetings are recorded, so if you would like to see that full presentation, you certainly are welcome to go back on our district website and find that for your viewing pleasure. After that, we had an update on a brand-new policy that has been established, Board Policy seven-five-four-seven, electronic communications between staff and students. And this policy, for people who'd like to look, was available via Board Docs for your review, it was several pages long. Mr. Garner was finalizing a few aspects of the policy, which will be presented for a final draft at our February PPC meeting, and then with anticipation, that will be moved on to our full board for approval in February. So definitely look through that. And then finally, we had a nice benefits update on the work that Jamie Brown and her team are overseeing. While there are no hard numbers, as we just heard, related to plan renewals and costs for the district, we were able to see some data based on plan utilization from quarter one. We were even able to see stats related to top prescription drugs that members were being prescribed in the first quarter from Mercy &amp; Dean, which I think is always really interesting to just see what our members are, what's going on in the world of their health. We learned about the work being done related to, you know, considerations to moving toward a self-funded health insurance in the district down the road potentially, and what could be involved with that, with some different programming that we would need to consider. So as a, just kind of a point to remember, that there is a committee, so a group of individuals from the district that Jamie is meeting with and updating and hearing all of these things as well. and updating and hearing all of these things as well. So the benefits team has requested bids from national carriers as a comparison with our local plans. And of course, we're working with the current carriers as well through the negotiation process to see what we're gonna get back from them. We don't have any hard numbers and it's just a waiting game for us. Where isn't much we can do except for wait for them to release that information. It's also nice to know that the district is doing a comparison with the Wisconsin Department of Employee Trust Funds, looking at their health insurance plan, just to make sure that we're looking at all the different options out there to ensure that we are able to provide the best plan to our employees that also fits into our budget. So you can go and look and see the rest of that presentation, but we will be hearing more finalized details in the coming months, in March, and then certainly early April for all of that finalization related to health insurance. Our next PPC meeting will be held Monday, February third at four-thirty. We look forward to seeing everyone involved and new people to join us. Thank you.
So first of all, I will say to my fellow commissioners, if you want to deep dive into any topic, we've done it. Over the last four-plus years, they could take any part of the budget, the big ledger spreadsheet, outstanding. Now, you gotta spend some time, because we dive in and we spend time. So it's not the case that we quickly go through a meeting. This, our last meeting, not our last meeting, our meeting in December was relatively quick. It was eighty-two minutes, which was relatively quick. Couple things to note. And I started with a safety share, and I think it's important as we think about safety. And it was really focused, this was after the shooting at the school in Madison. And it has always been focused on the surroundings, paying attention. So I don't know about any of you, but I always, I'm paying attention to everybody and everything initially. And is it somebody here that shouldn't be here? Or might not, you know, just looking at those things. But I think if we think from a vigilant standpoint of those things, the better off we all are. Thanks for that little bird walk there. And the other piece, Michelle, you asked about the update. The long-range plan is a monthly topic for the committee, and that will always be. So even if it is, I'll say, lesser information that not necessarily need to be presented as a full board, we will still have it in the committee. A couple things, the 2020 referendum, the projects are still around, ESER and a few other things. As we tick through a lot of those things and next-level projects, building automation system is ready to go, training is being done now. And when we get to the point of all the HVA systems are up and running within that, then we really will be able to dive into the security aspects of being able to remotely look at cameras and door fobs and all of those things. So we'll become that much better. One of the questions you asked, Kevin, about the, our annual capital maintenance budget and how will referendum work factor into that? Well, we do have emergencies come up. So emergency roof replacement at Parker, that happened to be taking place, I think, right now. If the weather was, well, maybe the weather is being cooperative, although it's cold, but that's being done. So those kinds of things, we will always need a budget available for things that we haven't factored in that just happened. Mentioning roofs, and I think it's really important. Any guess to how many square feet of roofs we have throughout the district?
How many square feet?
How many square feet?
Roofs, square.
Yeah, roofs. I got a million, anybody else?
I'd say higher than a million, like one-point-two.
One-point-two. She raised it to two, anybody else? One, two, one-point-two. Well, she gets a miss, but then she regrouped as a former committee member and hit it on the nose. Roughly two million. Yeah, that was good. So then, if we were to replace the roofs, how much, just a guess, what, any idea what that would be?
In money?
Yes, in money.
A lot, that's my guess, and I think I'm right, a lot.
So roughly, if we went to replace it all today, it's about thirty-four million dollars. So when we think about overall, just what we have, and you start to think about the things that need to be done, nobody ever sees the roof. But how critical is that for the buildings? It's absolutely critical. So when we think about going forward and the amount of work that needs to be done, because each building have different sections of roofs. So they're not all necessarily the same, well, there's probably one or two. There may be all the same, install all at the same time. But if we think about a section was built and we had an addition and we had another addition, this piece had a problem, we replaced this. So there is just about probably, I won't say a million, but I'd say at least a half million to three-quarters of a million dollars in roofs every year, just to keep up with what we have. All right, enough of the building stuff. One of the things that, early last month, the DPI was here to review our SCRO nutrition plan. And Liz Lido and her team went through, they went, let's see, Craig, Marshall, and Rock River Charter, looking at how they actually delivered the food and came up great. I mean, a few little things that need to be cleaned up, but really outstanding and outstanding to the point that DPI noted a few items that they really need to share across the state, because we would be best-in-class. And so that was really pretty, pretty amazing as we think about where we ultimately end up at. And I think the last piece to mention here is, and I'll go back to the buildings. We, we, we talk about the things that we want to do, need to do, and we think about the next level. And that's always making things that fit within the referendum. And as the dollars have been managed well by our architect and construction group, that leaves money available to do more. So they've done an outstanding job of managing that and working through the processes, which, yeah, there are a lot of building material delays and things and we're still waiting on a switchgear and some things. But because of the great management, we're able to continue to do things. So the building automation system wasn't originally one of the noted items within the referendum piece, but it goes directly to the safety and security that gives us a jumpstart on the next phase of what we need to do. I think that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. The board requests...
Just for you, Kevin, I have one more thing.
Oh, you do, okay.
I do, one more thing, sorry, how could I forget? The Riverside baseball field was groomed, top dressed, and other field preparations done for this coming spring season. So we, just as a little note, and I, I know it's the thing that we're, and I'll say it, we aren't necessarily proud of all of our facilities, but those that we have, we do the best to maintain them as best that we can. So this is one that was done ahead of the spring season to make sure that we're focusing on that, so.
I think that's me. Our Board of Education will be holding a workshop on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. It's going to be here at the ESC and the start time is at five PM. So we hope to get a early start. Remember to get your questions into either Mark or Kevin for that. And our PPC committee will meet on Monday, February third at four-thirty here at the ESC. And earlier today, we heard that the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will meet on Tuesday, February eighteenth at three PM here at the ESC.